... And make it far enough where he goes, well, we'll never have to go the second minute. Well, it's gonna have to go to court first. Yeah. So that's why I went out right away. I was like, screw it, I'm out. Right? I got two beauties though.
Call the meeting order. Roll call please.
Mayor Sui.
The President.
Mr. Burnham.
Yes.
Mr. Delio.
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Wade.
Yes.
And Mr. Yerkes.
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star-Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 12th, 2014. Please all roger the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate the orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If freed from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in a minute. Mr. Rossi.
I'm allowing you for five minutes. Is that on each issue?
Go ahead, just. That already got the five.
I have told.
I already have the five.
There's a lot of people waiting, Joe.
Get, get, Joe. It started, Joe. Joe, it started.
At a time.
I know what you're talking about. Anyway, I don't know if you all know that we threw this horse and buggy ride together to bring people downtown on Sunday because it's been a little quiet here too, and a couple of us and Anthony might show up too. But it was thrown together by the executive board, and we wanted to do something to get people to town on Sunday. So this came up, and we called up, Anthony called up the lady, we sat down, called her on the phone, got all the insurance certificates, went through all the laws, read the state laws, which are really nothing, the only street that they can go on is the Garden State Parkway, the way it looks. But as long as they have the proper lights and bells and what have you.
That's it.
She's insured, we're insured, so we're gonna use private property because we don't wanna be on the street. We're gonna use Prestige, she's gonna take his ballots out of the, out of the main lane side, so the carriage will pull in there and then pull out, or vice versa, whatever we think is safer. I'm supposed to meet the chief, I think tomorrow, with an officer, just to go through the route, so go the third direction, which is gonna be safe, safe travel for three hours, and that's it. We're not charged anything, we just wanna have people coming down, hopefully, so that you can do business.
So, Joe, the business will be open, I guess?
Yeah, we're open on the, the books of the business. We'll do something.
A great event, Christmas tree lighting with beautiful guys, good job, great job.
Great turnout too?
Yeah. Yeah, turnout was great.
And I'm looking forward to this on Sunday, I'll see you Sunday.
All right, great.
Did that start already? Did it start, the horse and buggy rides? You passed the gun, and then how long?
No, it'll only be on Sunday the 20th. Yeah, Sunday the 20th, that's all, from one to four.
And just coordinate with the chief, so he helps you, okay?
Yeah, so that's what we're looking for there, you know.
Thank you.
Like we did with the, um...
What's up, Ann? How you doing?
What's up?
Like we do it today, we do that, you know, of course you give us information for the tree and coordinate with the police.
Good, very good.
All right?
Do you guys want to see flyers?
Thank you.
You already gave them.
We have one.
You still got about two and a half minutes, Joe.
No, no, no. No, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else for the open session? Seeing now, I'll close the open session. All right, we have a presentation, and we have a mayor's proclamation for Radon Action Month. And this is a proclamation of Mayor of Borough of Burnsville, whereas radon is naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the second leading cause of lung cancer, and whereas prolonged exposure to radon can kill as many as 500 people in New Jersey each year, and whereas families who reside in homes with elevated radon levels are at risk of developing serious health problems, and whereas any home can have high levels even when neighboring homes do not, and whereas radon testing can be done with great ease at a relatively low expense to homeowner, with the cost of reducing radon concentrations being comparable to that of any home repair, and whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the United States Environmental Protection Agency are collaborating during the month of January to promote the need for radon testing in an effort to protect the lives of our state's residents, and whereas if all New Jersey homes with radon concentrations at or above four PCI dash L were mitigated, about 83 lives could be saved this year. Now therefore, I, Kevin Sui, Mayor of the Borough of Burnsville, on behalf of the Borough Council and the residents of Burnsville, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2016 as Radon Action Month in the Borough of Burnsville, and call upon any residents who have not yet tested to test their homes for radon and reduce radon levels if elevated levels are found in order to protect our families from serious health risks of radon. All right, items of business. All right, we have ordinance for continuing a public hearing on 15/17/08, an ordinance setting 2016 and 2017 salaries and hourly rates for non-contractual employees.
Just like to do that in the closed session first, please, Mayor?
Okay, we'll move this to closed session and possibly come out with a decision after closed session this evening.
I'm just trying to figure the exception that it may go on.
Contractual negotiations?
Dollars.
Okay, so then that's for non-contractual employees, I guess we can call it contractual negotiations. Sorry, I just got to think.
I don't want to entertain a motion to move 15/17/09, an ordinance concerning parking restrictions on Mine Mountain Road, and amending Chapter 7 of the Borough Code entitled Traffic, being introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM on December 28, 2015. Will by Mr. Youngblood, second by Councilwoman Waite. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, resolutions. We have Resolution 15/256 to Resolution 15/270. Anyone pulling for discussion or questions?
On Resolution 265, I don't really need it pulled, but I would like the water treatment plant to be correctly spelled, it's a T-R-E-A-T-M-N-T.
265.
The alum. Right now it's reading in the ordinance that it's the reatment plant.
Can you give me a line?
Third line.
In which paragraph?
First paragraph.
This one.
No, it's a typo, but I didn't, wouldn't wanna put it in our ordinances incorrectly. And can we discuss, can we pull and discuss 15/266?
Yes. All right, 15/266, authorizing a change order, number one, final to the contractor for Paramount Field and Park Lane drainage improvements. John?
Sure. This has been showing up in my public works reports for the last couple of months. We've been negotiating with the contractor. Two things occurred that were completely unanticipated. We knew that the handball footing was there, but we didn't realize that it extended so far out into where our trench is. Contractor got off to a good start, installed his head wall, first catch basin, and then immediately hit this footing, sizable, size of this table, 18 inches, 24 inches deep. Unanticipated, definitely warranted change order, he gave us fair pricing for the removal and disposal of it. We thought we were in pretty good shape after we got past the footing, immediately started hitting rock. I don't know if any of you all were down by the Clermont Field while the project was going on, we had a small mountain of rock that came out of the trench. As best we can figure, when they were building the field and the parking lot, whatever spoils they could get rid of from Burnsville quarry possibly, wound up down there. Doug was there the whole time, they were pulling out rocks, this, this big around, and it wasn't insubstantial, similar to rock excavation, being where a normal trench would be two or three feet wide, these big boulders kept coming up, pulling up the asphalt with the sides sloughing in. There's only about 200 feet of pipe, contractor anticipated he could do it in a day or two alone with the catch basins, it took him seven, so it took him five more days to do the work. Again, we, we have practice time, certified payrolls from him documenting his labor, tickets from him for additional DGA. Bob Brightman did a very vigorous review of his, his request. It's interesting to note that with the extra time that he was claiming he lost, he wasn't looking for equipment time, the only equipment, he didn't charge us for that. That could have been a substantial legitimate add-on to the change order. So, we feel the contractor gave us some, some pretty good information, didn't try to hit us too hard. We pushed through with this because we had the Mine Mountain Road, Badner, and Park Lane job, contention on us finishing this and getting this drainage in before they could come down Park Lane. The contractor on Mine Mountain started about two weeks after we completed this work. So, time was of the essence. The main, well, one of the issues with this change order, there is adequate funding in the ordinance, so I'm not coming to you asking for more money. It was a small contract, $44,000, we're over 20% of that amount, we're at 45%. That's about $20,000 change, change order. So there are a couple steps we have to do, I had Sandy amend the, the change order, we have to, the auditor must get this, we have to publish this, and Sandy, the particulars on that. But basically, we feel that the contractor acted earnestly, he did not try to nickel and dime us, which is often the case when contractor has a change order situation, we recommend approval of the change order.
My question really is, I read all that stuff, and I understand we've taken out some of the paving in exchange, you know, to keep the price closer. My concern is that the surface of the parking lot at Clermont Field is sort of a mess.
It's always been a mess.
I thought as part because the money, some of the money toward that drainage was coming out of open space, that parking lot was also gonna be improved.
That was never the intention of this project. We haven't been told what's happening with the field.
So that's the next step, is what we're gonna do with that backside. Yeah, so the next step is what are we gonna do? There's plenty of land back there, we could, we can do some, improve some recreation facilities. So that's something we're gonna consider next year.
We actually talked about that, and that we didn't know what the plans were for that area and what to do with the area, so we didn't pursue it because to pave something over when there are other opportunities to do things after some of the things got cleared up, it didn't make any sense.
Okay.
Haven't heard from that on this. Cause there was basketball courts back there, but we're building a new complex, so that's gonna go.
We do need parking, and right now, there's no parking, virtually no parking up above because between people that live near, above the bookworm, you know, customers, there's just no, there's little of any parking.
But the only thing is... Yeah. Basketball courts, parking lot, or softball games.
But I hate to use recreation land for parking, so that's what we need to talk about.
Where are we gonna put, I mean, where are we gonna put all these people if they wanna come watch a game?
They usually park on the side, they could walk the street, they could walk on the one side of Mine Mountain, they could park on the upper spot.
The upper spot, as I just said, is basically...
But usually that's nighttime parking up there, overnight parking.
Ah, I think you better go by there at 3:00 in the afternoon sometimes, there's, it's amazing.
So we also have to work on that upper part and find out who's parking there, that's, that's some discussions for next year too.
And we're also, and we're trying to get Green Acres to let us know, you know.
I understand we're waiting for the DEP, you know, to figure out what we can do, but...
What we're really trying to do is have a, sort of a more comprehensive plan, instead of just doing a little bit here and a bit there.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just, as much as saying, we wanna make sure that...
I'm sure some of that...
Something is gonna be done, because it's, at this point, pretty unfinished.
One concern we have too, Janet, because of all the boulders and the amount of backfilling that happened in there, you know, while we put DGA in there, the contractor compacted in lifts, it's still gonna sub.
No, that's valid.
And we didn't wanna do a finished job there only to have to sub, knowing we're gonna have to rip it out probably in the future and do something.
Okay. I was just trying to ask the question.
Good question. Yeah, I mean, also, I mean, is it, it always seemed to me that that's, I mean, that's a sort of a recreation and play area, so even if we did have the parking there, it's pretty tight quarters for cars unless we have some way of coordinating off people from vehicles, and, you know, I would hope that we were able to do it more, plan it out better than maybe it's been in the past.
Well, I mean, and the other thing that the school needs to do, which is beyond our jurisdiction, but they are, they use that softball field for their games, so they come in there with buses.
That's not beyond our jurisdiction, that is borough property.
I understand that, but somehow or other, the school also needs to work on communicating where buses that are bringing other school teams should go.
Okay, well, I mean, it is borough facility, so we do have total jurisdiction. Yes. Maybe we haven't exercised it in the past, but, you know, things seem to creep along, and after a while they get to be a little bit larger and more evolved, and thoughtful thoughts, you know. And moving forward, we'll look at all the issues that we've brought up this evening.
Yeah, so now that that area's done, then we're gonna start considering what to do down there, but we didn't wanna go ahead and repay it, it was money, so we wanna hold off, so it's kinda where we stand.
Anyone else?
So do you still want full 60C?
No, I just wanted to ask the question before we voted on it. I don't like asking questions after we've voted on these.
That's what I do. Just to point information on 264.
Yes.
Is that, are we doing background check or are we going through?
Doing background check.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right.
All right, anyone else? Entertaining motion to move 15/256 to 15/270?
I'll move with the amendment that Janet added to protect the reatment. I'll second.
All right, move by Mr. Youngblood, second by Mr. Deportaire. Roll call please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, 6C, agreement with Somerset County Transportation. There's been a minor change with shopping, and the costs have gone up approximately 2%. Anybody have any comments on that?
If it's acceptable, I'll have a resolution written for the meeting.
Well, I'm frequently at ShopRite midday Friday, and, I mean, we have plenty of residents that, that use it, so...
I was just gonna ask that, what's the use like, the numbers, is it good?
Two to three riders a week, sometimes one.
That surprises me.
You're seeing, what you're seeing more than's coming from the county senior center. This is the van that supplements that.
We pay per trip.
92 bucks or something?
Right, but if no one, does, does a resident have to call and request that?
Yeah.
So if there are no riders that week, we have no charge?
Right, but we have at least one person who's using it routinely, so sometimes it's just one person, but that person seems to be...
Well, for, for those individuals, the need is invaluable service.
Yes.
So have you ready for next meeting?
How do people find out about this, this guy?
Well, it's on our website, on the county website, it's posted. The senior center knows about it, and they list it.
Social workers and so on know that?
Anybody at the county senior site, yes.
Word to help them about it?
Yes, of course, yep. We have in the past sent out flyers to all the seniors we know about, but we haven't done that in a while. Didn't seem to make any difference in terms of the number of users.
I think it's a fairly close knit group of people.
Yes.
Lovely.
And Recreation Department does a great job with the seniors, have their picnics and holiday parties and get an information out.
Right. Now, how does the Tuesday trip, I guess it's Thursday, Monday trips to Bridgewater and Morristown, how has that schedule worked? I mean, if I, if, if I was elderly and needed a ride to Morristown...
Right, the person who's going to Morristown, pretty routine, may is going to a hairdresser there, and she calls the county and schedules the trip.
She can't use a Burnsville hairdresser?
You just don't understand. That seems like a comment we'd make down on this end, I'm... Yeah, I'm kinda shocked, I'm like, you just don't understand.
Well, you're right.
Same thing with medical, with doctors, most of our doctors.
I love you, Janet.
It's plus the extra trips to the grocery store.
It's getting more than six months.
And nobody should be asking me about hair care. There is.
And I asked them to add banks, or different than that, and then occasionally they go to the mall, or, you know, yes, the riders have to call Somerset County Transportation and schedule it, and they, they actually do have to, if they get a lot of requests for one location as opposed to the other, they actually sort of have to manage it a little bit, because they can't go in both directions in the same day, so there's a certain amount of...
I think it's a good service it provides, you know, transportation to those in need that would otherwise not be able to get the locations.
How does the county service work, Sandy?
That is getting riders to and from the senior site, and then they also, same thing, they do the very same things, they, they go to grocery stores, parks.
Or from, they leave from the senior site?
I think, I'm not positive about that, I think they also pick people up at other times, but it is those people who participate in that senior site. It's a service for everybody who goes there routinely.
So if you don't go to that site...
Most of their trips are related to coming or going.
They have lunch there, they have different programs for them, activities.
Right, at the site they have programs.
Do we, how many riders we usually get on that service?
I think quite a few.
Yeah, the center's pretty, pretty...
Now, that's totally provided by the county, there's no charge for that.
Oh, okay.
The county funds are paying for that.
Okay. So this is the only service, we're, bus service, we're providing at the town?
Right.
Okay.
All right, so we're all in agreement, resolution agreement?
I'll have it ready for next meeting.
Very good, thanks, Ann. All right, 6D, agreement with New Jersey Rental Inspections. I'm Sandy, when does our contract expire?
The end of December.
End of December, okay.
There was nothing in our package.
Yeah, there was nothing in the package.
In the package, yeah.
Well, I didn't, I don't have a new contract, I didn't put the old one in because it's been in place all year, but I can send it to you if you want to take another look at it. I don't have a new proposal for him, I haven't heard anything from anyone, so that's why I asked the mayor to put this on the agenda, because it does expire at the end of the month, I didn't know what the extension was.
Okay, let's...
Jeff, what's happening? We haven't talked about this at all at the housing committee, so I don't really have...
I say we, you know, Sandy, reach out to New Jersey Rental Inspections and see what their proposal is going into 2016.
Jack, would they continue with that if there isn't a contract in place?
We could, I think the council should take some action.
We could extend it for a month, I mean, the first, the next housing meeting's not till January.
You could extend it on the same terms and additions, they have to agree on this.
All right, so that'll be back on the agenda for the 28th?
Okay.
Unless we wanna, you wanna just extend it for one month? I mean, I'm... Why don't we do two months, and then it gives us time to talk about it twice, as a committee?
Do I have to do month by month, Jack, or?
Either way.
Either way, okay.
Two months.
All right, so you wanna put it off at 28th, or?
Yeah.
All right. All right, 6E, for Sacred River Coalition Membership. Peter?
I'm not sure what their status is currently, I haven't heard that they're, I know that they're disposing of properties, and there's been some, you know, not much action in terms of their, because of their financial status, I don't know that...
Well, have we contributed $125 to them in the past annually, or is this sort of the new, I don't remember this from last year.
Off and on. The question is asked every year with the council, some years we had, and some years we had not.
I think, I, I heard only indirectly that they, I don't know what they have in the way of staff, or what actions they're actually taking at this point, and I think maybe we should just table it and ask, you know, for, you know, find out what their current status is before we go ahead and do it. Be better off supporting one of the other organizations that are just along this watershed that's, you know, a little bit more germane to us right now.
Agreed.
Is it able till the next meeting, or?
You can, you want to just ask her, you know, if they can report what they, their projects, and whether they're, current audits and things like that.
I think someone last year made the point that there are more beginning projects going on at the Pacific Burnsville.
Well, it's all part of the watershed, and we're a member of that watershed, and they do a lot of, they, they used to do a lot of stuff that, you know, certainly in the public interest, certainly clean drinking water is, since a lot of towns on the will is, is probably the thing. But if they're, if they're, you know, quasi-defunct, then I don't know.
I mean, you haven't really heard anything from them in the last year, basically.
Only if they wanted to give us a piece of land that, you know, was not something that we could accept because of the peculiarities of the...
No sense spending money if they're effective.
Table us for further information?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I agree, yeah.
That's...
All right, good, all right. 6F, Footbridge and Mine Brook Project, I've been working with the chief on this and the lane, and, you know, I feel on the chief himself that the Mine Brook Project is the first step, it's the most important thing to get us moving forward, and that will be the project with Montclair State, the hydrologist in FEMA, which would give us a study on, on the stream and give us some information to seek further funding opportunities. And Janet, I'm sure you have some.
Right, I've also been talking to the chief, and, you know, he feels, and he has been led to believe that there may be some more mitigation monies available from the county as possibly other towns have not completed their projects, but, you know, if we, until we do that study and get the preliminary plan fixed, you know, A, we've got parking lots that are underwater and falling into the river, and, you know, we clearly need to do something, and if we wanna go for any other grants, we're gonna need to have spent this money and get a plan. And Montclair State has been very cooperative with us, I think they've met with John, I know with Kevin.
We have their pond too.
With Kevin.
Yes.
Who, who's actually coordinating the activities of all these groups, I mean, the, the focal point with the borough at this point?
It really has been, I think, Kevin and John, right?
Yeah, more, more Kevin.
Yeah, basically due to our Office of Emergency Management.
Yeah, but there's two different projects, right, Jeff?
Well, there's, the, the Footbridge came out of the discussion about the Mine Brook study.
Yeah.
There, there was fear that, with the Footbridge, we still have a lot of questions unanswered, you know, the point was to go through this process with the idea of getting mitigation grants to help us with them. Just like Janet said, if we go through the study, they may identify opportunities.
For more, for more grants and things like that, right?
And, and it just, Kevin also, Kevin Valentine, helped put us in a better track to get into the mitigation grant funding stream with that. Yeah, there's, there's more work, you know, the Footbridge was, it came up because we thought it was an easy one, FEMA had suggested that. It's turning out not to be an easy one.
And the college, though, had to do it because of the semester, they needed to sort of get it done.
Correct.
Before the end of the, May or June, something like that, right?
And, yes, and then with, with any of these projects, as we're, as we're talking internally with Ralph, we got a parking issue out here, you know, we've got other projects along Mine Brook, the culvert that provides access over to get some of our personal and borough vehicles over into the gravel lot, there's some piping that needs to be done down by Quarry Road also, all of which require DEP permitting, talking about brightly, it's a great application to do one shot... It's a great application to do one shot, pay that big fee upfront. You know, we gotta wait sixty to a hundred twenty days with DEP anyway, do it all at once. But in the meantime, this study could happen and, you know, there may be some, uh, some, some funds or grants identified that might help us out with those other projects.
And you could phase those projects in.
Yes.
On the same permit.
Big dollar projects.
Right.
Ralph, we're okay with the initial investment?
Twelve thousand five hundred, I believe, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we can take that out of the engineering, uh, plans.
And Kevin said there was really no need to put any money toward the Footbridge now, there's just too much that needs to be done. So we're not talking, you know, the Montclair State budget.
We discussed that internally and I, I, I thought that would be the best course of action too. Because we really, we don't have funds available anywhere for that. But the twelve thousand five hundred to get us going is good.
All right, so everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right. Street signs, John, Jeff.
John, you want to start?
Sure. This is kind of a, an offshoot or continuation of, you know, some of the, the things you've heard here at council about signs in general. We have been looking, just started looking in our, our last meeting at parking signs, but it was brought up that the street signs in town people often desire.
If we have them.
Especially the old fashioned ones, the, the pillar style.
People don't like those, the ones where the paint's falling off, it looks like someone's hit with a shotgun.
They're just disintegrated, yeah, like someone shot at them, exactly.
So, uh, the old tomcat style that we have, that I know you've seen them, the white ones with a lot of cast aluminum around them, a real pain in the butt to put together, they're non-reflective, they don't meet the current NUTCD. So, uh, it's probably time to get a nice uniform, uh, street sign around that everybody can see. At Public Works, um, I was asked to get some prices. The, the price on the spreadsheet in front of you is sort of the, the white on green reflectorized, you see them all over the place. Jeff and Peter and Chris, I was able to confirm that nine inch on the higher speeds is guidance, not, uh, not a regulation. Six inch lettering's pretty big.
Yeah.
Six inch lettering on a street sign is about like that. You'll see it quite a ways away, the nine inch would be just ridiculous. So the pricing, just material costs only, um, there's about a hundred ninety public signs, about thirty-eight private. We thought if we're doing it, let's make it all uniform. The, uh, making assumption that half the posts are good. Uh, you'll probably see some that are listing bent, rusting, et cetera. So, uh, pricing, uh, that we need to replace half of them. We come up with a total for materials only, twenty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars. Uh, the street signs have a life greater than five years, it's certainly eligible for capital funding. The, uh, it is labor intensive, my road department can, can easily do it. I would not suggest that we stop them from doing something for say a month and replace all of our signs. This is something I would propose, we phase in, uh, get an ordinance, fund it however you want to. Doesn't have to be all in this coming year, split it up in a few years. My manufacturer, the, the vendor's not going to be able to crank them out, you know, like that. Uh, and then we could hit them as time permits, sector by sector maybe. But I think it's something that should be done.
I think maintenance assignments.
It'd be nice for us to get up to code and be able to see.
Um, in the proposal that you put together, they talk about two signs per road, but on some of our roads, I think we need a few more. I mean, you look at a Clermont, it's got, are you just going to put it at the beginning on two oh two?
No, I mean, each, um, we would have one where, where Mine Mountain meets Clermont, two signs.
Every intersection.
Every intersection.
All right, so Clermont would actually then get one, two, six or something, okay.
Some of them will have more than that. Uh, I'm not going to try to put five signs at the five corners, it'll be two. But we do have places where there may be a couple, um, Mount Harmony, Roebling, Postkell, you know, trying to hit that, there's three. Private roads, some, some people know our private roads because Autonill Drive, Dickery Tree Lane. For, for nine one one, that's okay, we probably should have a private road number seventy-eight on top of that. So that someone who may not be terribly familiar with our town gets there.
Right.
So John, we talked about the green sign with the white, but I was, in my travels, as going through East Hanover, they have black with yellow letter and it looks really sharp. I don't know if you.
Could be green with yellow.
The reflective.
Could be green with yellow with your colors.
I've, I've never seen those. I've seen white on blue, Chester Township has a, there's, there's a bunch of different.
Lot colors are green on yellow now.
Yeah, I mean, I can ask my vendor what the price is for that.
They're really nice.
You know, from, uh, a little bit of days that it's like, I don't know, it's invisible combinations. I'd say it's everyone actually, Latin word.
Thanks.
Are we also, John, we also ordered signs like pointing to parking lots and stuff like that. We've sort of been talking about it, but I think we started some of this discussion with signs to say welcome to Burnersville, probably four of them, but then, you know, pointing to the parking lots by the library and stuff.
We, we started talking about that at Public Works.
Yep.
Easier said than done, uh, it's, it's.
Everything's easier said than done.
No, it's complicated because as we went through the downtown project, Bob Brightley and I were talking to him. When you go up there now, you're bombarded by signs. We actually removed a lot of signs. Part of the problem is, you know, we have thirty-minute parking, we have two-hour parking, we have ten-minute parking, we have valet parking. No parking here, shipping deliveries. We now have crosswalks where we didn't have crosswalks before, you have crosswalk advance, crosswalk ahead, right here. Mandatory, can't get rid of those. There's speed limit signs there, you know, the list goes on and on. So the challenge is where to get these parking directional signs that they don't get lost in all the other signs where they're most affected. We, we just started really digging into it at Public Works. Uh, we pulled out the downtown project, we pulled out overall map of the, of the downtown area and.
Can we utilize, can we utilize the signal posts from the state and stuff?
I believe so, but we're probably going to have to.
In a couple areas, get them up high.
When you come down Mount Airy, there's no place to put a sign between the Palmer Building and the curve.
I guess you would just have to go to state and just make sure they were okay with the location.
Anything we do is going to require a permit from the state to put a, a new post in or to put a sign on there, uh, signal.
Mr. Delio and I talked about bringing that together, we're going to sort of do a, a little.
A walk-through and see, because we got the plans from, uh, from Bob Brightley. Um, but I think many of those signs that are listed on the plan are no longer in the downtown area. So we're going to go through there and take inventory of what's there and then think about where we could place these parking signs to get the people around.
And the hours and, you know.
And of course we're going to have to involve the chief at some point in this too, so.
The chief pointed out too, with the, uh, the downtown project, there's some, some existing signs that don't match the revised, all, all the parking in the downtown is controlled by the state statute now, not local ordinance. The signs that are up there don't match what was written by, in, in the statute. So there's, we'd definitely need to involve the chief to make sure that we've got our parking.
When did that get changed?
I, I don't know. I just, I was having a conversation with the chief about it, it's happened to mention it, I was talking about directional parking, the parking sign.
Maybe you could, um, get us for Public Works as soon as possible so that we, like, Jeff and I can go out and have a sense of what's on the state. So we don't have to do it twice.
All right, so we're all in favor of the street signs?
Yes.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Definitely. Yeah, I mean, and as John said, you know, it's not urgent but to have the, the water at one time and have everything ready and.
Yes.
Phase out based on, you know, his crews and where they are and what the availability is, is.
Say, was East Hanover?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at their, one of their agendas, American Traffic and Street Sign Company did those.
Oh. Uh, John, is that up under?
It's not the one that I use.
Maybe I want to email.
But I can, I can certainly.
Chad, you've emailed a picture to John, maybe he can show it to you.
Yep, we can always put it out.
Yep.
Even if it's not required.
All right, um, it's no further on the street signs. Six H, request from Nelson Tree Service Route two oh two, um, for parking. John, I saw the correspondence from your office on this.
A gentleman from Nelson Tree was in, I can't remember the last time, five years ago or so. They came in, they started up at the substation and they worked their way out. He has, I have seen his pink ribbons, if you go by the Dunster property, you can see a few pink ribbons up there. Up Clermont, um, out, um, two oh two is where they would be starting. He's asked for permission to use the lot across the street. Um, he got back to me, indicated it would be, uh, six trucks there and they'd also be looking at six trucks up at Kulanis. Of course, we're going into winter, uh, any approval would have to be contention upon us not needing a lot for, uh, snow removal. I reminded him that the last contractor that was in there pretty much left it in a pristine condition. Got back, communicated, he would, they would try to leave it the same way.
The only thing I wasn't sure about, it sounded to me like it was going to be two oh two first and then the, maybe those same trucks would go up to, um.
I, I believe you're right.
So we actually wouldn't be donating.
We wouldn't have twelve.
Simultaneously both parking lots.
You should probably look at Mullins Lane up by Old Army too.
I think you were copied on his email, I'll let you send him an email.
Thanks.
We were.
He's in orange, you don't know? That street sign comes in orange.
The other thing, he didn't, in the email that he asked me about was a place to temporarily store chips. Um, he has a, someone that works with him, that they would pile up the chips and this person would come and clean up the big pile of chips. The logical place for that is the landfill, which is a, you know, repository for chips. But that would mean having to have someone up there non-stop to man the gate and make sure that only chips were coming in. I don't see that happening. The other thing, anywhere the chips go down.
Would they subsidize that?
I could ask him. I mean, I, I don't know who would be put up there, you know, I, I would, I would want one of my employees up there.
That's what I'm saying, subsidize one of your guys.
I really don't have employees up at the landfill.
That's the problem, we don't want room.
Five, six days a week.
Yeah, especially just in case.
Especially as time of year.
Snow comes.
Right, um, wherever you put down chips, you're going to have a desert there for a long time. I mean, they can only go down someplace that you don't want to, anything to grow for a while. I, I'm not aware of any place that really fits the bill that we would want chips to go to. So, you know, we, we'd like to try to help out all the vendors that come in, to get them in, you know, anything we can do to help get them in and out quickly benefits the borough, but I just don't know where we would stockpile these chips that we may have missed.
How big a area does he need for wood chips? I don't know how frequently he's going to have them.
About an acre.
Depends on how much he cuts.
I think it's this room at least, uh, you know, three, four times the size of the room, I'm really not sure. He's going to be in the borough for about a few miles.
So he can have a lot of wood chips.
Yeah, he'll be a lot of wood chips.
And that's a little, that's a little too much for us up the dump.
Yeah. And you can't tie people up every day for that length of time.
There's, there's no guarantee how quickly you remove them.
Unless they wanted to pay for it, but we don't really have excess staff, so.
No, not your problem. All right, Jack, what do we have to do with this, we need a.
I, I think immersion allowing it with all the precautions that John mentioned.
Use of the, uh, use of the lot and Kulanis.
Two oh two and Kulanis.
But they have to remove the chips themselves.
Yes, with all the provisions that Mr. McDowell mentioned, including them leaving both properties in pristine condition and pending, um, any snow, they'd have to remove their equipment.
But not the chip storage.
No chips or.
No, no chips, just leave it.
Per se no chips.
All right, I'm staying in motion.
I'll move.
Number one, Mr. Deportaire.
Sir.
Second one, Mr. Delio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Uh, Mr. Bearbaum abstained, okay.
It, it areas just get so much use and people are wondering what it's, why it looks like a, um, you know, a trucky hub. They'll find a better way, but we don't have one right now, so.
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Unfortunately, we don't.
Okay.
In the long term, it's for the betterment of the community and the power to the houses and everything else in the winter, so it's not, you know.
Understand. All right, six I, library parking, Doug?
Yeah, we also have an issue, um, the library parking, even parts assigned which and, and things like that. And also the, uh, police department's ability to enforce, uh, parking regulations down there. Um, we find ourselves in a position where our tenants are actually receiving some of this for parking, um, in the parking lot. So what I was hoping we could do tonight, we have to come up with a plan, uh, for the entire parking area, but what I was hoping tonight, uh, the council would give permission for our, um, two of our lower level tenants looking for.
Come on, break one of their dogs so we can all see.
Do we have new tenants or this is just, we need additional spaces for the existing tenants?
They're looking for three spots.
I saw that we were looking for three, I was hopeful that we had new tenants, but.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I get it.
Um, but what's happening is now that we're trying to enforce the laws that we have on blocks and parking signs, it's just really, really, you know, that's a project for the first quarter of next year to get that squared away throughout. So they're not looking, they're looking for three spots, um, and what we're looking to do is put them in the back here, four rows back from the, from the entrance, just three spots in this corner next to the old library parking that's assigned to the old library. So I was hoping to get the approval to do that right away while we're, uh, you know, contemplating what we're going to do with the rest of the lot. These signs say four hours parking or permit. The hang tags don't work, uh, for the police and ones that hang from the, uh, from the mirrors. Uh, the ordinance has written that this, this should all be four hour parking, not or permit. And the other issue I think we need to talk about is for the library employees, uh, the parking is way out here. And, you know, I think with all these spots remaining open ninety percent of the time, uh, we might want to move that forward to encourage them to use the employee parking versus the parking in the areas. There's a hundred forty-nine spots, so I'm asking for, uh, you know, an additional three, this is the tenants are. We have Quest and we have the Northwest Therapy and it do need a day to come back or to park and, you know, without the proper signage, it'd be, we'd be seeing some.
So Doug, the, the, the people that work in the library, where do they park? Are they required to park?
What's happening now is they're parking throughout the lot.
Okay, so do they have, um, a decal or is it?
They have hang tags.
Yeah, but they could park in those areas over there.
The parking ordinance for the library actually said there would be decals on the cars. After that ordinance was adopted, someone, and I don't remember exactly who, but I think it came from the planning board, wanted us to use the hang tags instead.
For the planning board?
For the employees at the library. But, um, those are not as effective in my opinion as a decal on the bumper because they seem to disappear. And then librarians tell me which numbers are gone and I tell the police which numbers are void. But the police can't see the numbers from inside the car and they don't want, you know, because it's hanging on the mirror. So, in my opinion, the hang tags are not very effective. And it would be an easy thing to, you know, just order decals.
We should go right, go right back to decals.
Absolutely, go to decals.
And then we can change it, so.
They also get swapped a lot and, you know.
Yeah, they just.
You mean, get, order ten hanging things or something so that if somebody's car's in the shop and they borrow their husband's, they can get a temporary for the day.
Right.
Well, we have some already, of course, and then we would just issue, if you want me to issue decals up there for anybody who's working in that building as an employee, uh, in the library or in the lower level. in the library or in the lower level, I can do that, and then just issue new ones every year, so they always have a year on the sticker. That way, if somebody leaves the employee or something, eventually at least we catch up to them at the end of the year.
Well, the library should give you a roster, and...
Right, but the police should know, which will check.
Odds are, not his employee is not going to be parking there.
I don't think so, no.
So, if you want us to do that, we can switch to that, and in the meantime, Doug, your three people could have one as well, so that they can park in their spaces and have the additional ID on the car, just as protection.
We had some discussion about this whole thing, and I was pretty passionate about leaving all the spaces that are closest to the library unencumbered for the public that is using it, whether it's a tenant going to a tenant's facility, or it's going to the library. And that employees should be, you know, parking at the other end, a little bit less convenient, but the building and facilities are for, you know, the people that are renting space, and it's good for them to have places near the building, and also for...
For patrons.
Patrons, yeah.
The only thing I would argue against that is, we've got extra space in the area that goes on to Church Street, correct? So, you were talking about moving...
It's like wing over there.
Right.
Currently, the library employee parking is here.
I don't have a problem moving it up one section, because you may have people that want to walk down Church Street and go to some of the stores right there.
Right, or the, yeah, I agree.
So, you know, I don't see a problem with leaving the ones closest to the library.
That's not what I'm saying, Jenna. It's just that a lot of it has been in the first two lines.
No, yeah, and I have no empathy for somebody that gets a ticket when they've been told, you know, they're an employee, and employee parking is in the back. So, if you were right across from the library, that's not...
Well, the problem is that the signs have come down. I guess the signs have disappeared.
Yeah, I read, I read that the, we read that the signs, they've been knocked down over the years, I guess from following and what have you. So, again, the people from Marston Medical that were assigned these spaces were getting tickets. So, what we did is, we had new signs, we replaced the signage here, so they're good to go. We have patron, three patron spots here, two are vacant, you know, just for first come, first served. And then, like I said, I'm just requesting the three spots four rows back from the entrance in this back corner here.
That's fine.
One for Quest and two for the Northwest therapy.
Doug, the old library, the old library complex, those owners also have spots in here?
Yes, they have, they have 10, they have 10 spots here.
But why?
So, it's part of, from what I understand, we're part of the agreement, the property is sold.
And developed.
That's right, a long time ago, there was in Kulanis.
And I think what's happening, this sign has been knocked down as well, that directs the people that are going to the old library to park in these spots, because I've been up there, and there's two cars here, you know, very, very light, and they also have 15 spots up here. So, they have a total of 25, okay? And this is very light also. But I think if we improve the signage, or get the people to park in here that are going to the old library, that'll open up some of these, and I think if we just did the four hour parking now out, and like I said, if I can just get the three spots right away to go ahead and, you know, take care of our tenants, I think that would be all right.
That's fine.
Do we need a motion, or just...
Yeah, what do we have to do tonight? We have to amend the ordinance?
Yeah, this has got to, the ordinance has got to be amended, so we really can't do it until next year.
Okay.
So, well, that we can...
Then a man can temporarily...
Make some of those temporary changes, because they're important.
Okay. Well, actually, before we do the ordinance, someone wanted to see if there was lower-rate commuter parking available in town. So, between Anthony and you and myself, we sort of hit that around a little bit. So, we don't actually have any so-called designated commuter parking in any other area. It's all either for the tenants of these businesses, there's merchant, but we don't have anything else, so.
The train station?
Well, only the train station, yeah. But if somebody wanted to pay less and walk two blocks, we don't really have anything if there was a bus or something like that, or some other transportation they're getting on, you know, we don't have the flexibility. So, what I'm asking is, maybe we could have some flexibility to designate these as paid if somebody wants to pay for it, that it doesn't have to be just tenants or employees or whatever.
Are they citizens of the town?
Yeah. Well, you don't have to be in the train station, you know?
No, you don't.
For their spots, yeah.
If they're being unused, and, you know, is it going to happen? Am I going to account for it? Whether you have the budget? I don't think Ralph would let me, and I wouldn't do it anyway, but, you know, would you at least have the flexibility? Because right now, we don't have it.
What location are you proposing?
There? What about, I mean, Ammerman, that means, is there any space up there? No, that's fully sold out.
Well, Ammerman, I, I mean, we sell a lot of decals, but maybe 10% of them are actually being used.
We don't have, we don't have any customer park, I mean shopper park, either, right?
There's a few shopper spaces in Ammerman, I think four or five, I forget how many. Just as you pull in on the left, and then part of the railroad station lot, the whole end near Master Shoes, that's all shopper parking.
As long as there's a shopper parking there.
And then the own street spaces.
Okay. But just to, we could draft it that we have the ability to, you know...
Okay, so, just, okay.
No, I was, how do we get Doug his three spots?
Okay, all we have to do is a motion, correct?
Yes.
Three additional spots next to the old library? That's where you want to be, right?
Yeah, pending amendment of the ordinance.
Pending amendment of the ordinance in 2016.
And then we'll do the ordinance for the remainder parking. They won't be enforceable by the police department or whatever regulation, do this by the way of the ordinance.
I understand the motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Deportaire. Second by Mr. Youngblood. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.